So Jayabim to all of you and we are into the session of reading a very seminal text of Babasam Ambedkar, the philosophy of Hinduism. And we have covered the ground about the two tests to judge a religion, the philosophy of any religion that is justice and utility. And we have seen how Hinduism in its Brahmanical core failed both the test of justice and utility. And today we are going to look at the deeper philosophical aspect of it. And we are going to look at the comparison with the, the, the philosophy that has turned the world upside down in the last century, the philosophy of Nazism and the philosophy of fascism and the philosophy of Hitler and philosophy of Mussolini and so forth. So Babasam Ambedkar is going to go into the, at length of that, comparing how Brahmanism is, you know, so dangerous to the humanity in terms of its ideology and philosophy. So before taking much time, I would like to request Shashank to kindly proceed with reading.
Yes, thank you so much, sir. I will start. So the above text from the Manu disclosed the core and the heart of the philosophy of Hinduism. Hinduism is the gospel of the Superman and it teaches that what is right for the Superman is the only thing which is called morally right and morally good.
Shashank, I think these opening remarks are worth pondering upon because the philosophy of Superman is so popular in the West. Of course, Babasam Ambedkar is going to go into that, that there will be Superman who will be, you know, changing the world. And this, this philosophy of Superman is such a core of, of, of Brahmanical philosophy that, you know, it, 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 the only thing that is at the center of the Hinduism is not an individual or, or, nor the society. It is only the, you know, the, 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 the good of Superman. And in this case, of course, the Superman in the Hindu context are the Brahmins. So I think this, this is a direct comparison of Superman with the, the Brahmanical community. So go on.
Sure. Is there any parallel to this philosophy? I hate to suggest it, but it is so obvious. The parallel to this philosophy of Hinduism is to be found in a Nietzsche. The Hindus will be angry at this suggestion. It is quite natural. For the philosophy of Nietzsche stands in great odium. It never took roots. In his own words, he was sometimes defeated as a philosopher of the aristocracy and squiderkey. Sometimes hooded at, sometimes pitied and sometimes by-coated as an inhuman being. Nietzsche's philosophy had become identified with will to power, violence, denial of spiritual values. Superman and the sacrifice, servility and debasement of the common man. His philosophy with these high spots had created a certain loathsomeness and horror in the minds of the people of his own generation. He was utterly neglected, if not shunned, and Nietzsche himself took comfort by blessing himself among the posthumous men. He foresaw for himself a remote public centuries after his own time to appreciate him. Here too, Nietzsche was destined to be disappointed. Instead of there being any appreciation of his philosophy, the lapses of time has only augmented the horror and loathing which people of his generation fail for Nietzsche. This is principally due to the revelation that the philosophy of Nietzsche is capable of producing Nazism. His friends have vehemently protested against such a construction. But it is not difficult to see that his philosophy can be as easily applied to evolve a superstate as to Superman. This is what the Nazis have done. At any rate, the Nazis trace their ancestry from Nietzsche and regard him as their spiritual parent. Hitler has himself photographed behind, beside a bust of Nietzsche. He takes the manuscripts of the master under his own special guardianship. Exacts are chosen from Nietzsche writings and loudly proclaim at the ceremonies of Nazism as the new German faith. Nor is the claim by the Nazis of the spiritual ancestry with Nietzsche denied by his near relations. Nietzsche's own cousin, Richard Okler, approvingly says that Nietzsche's thought is a Hitler in action. And that Nietzsche was the foremost pioneer of the Nazi accession to power. Nietzsche's own sister, few months before her death, thanks the buhrer for the honor he graciously bestows on her brother, declaring that she sees in him that incarnation of the Superman foretold by Zaruthustra.
Okay. You see, this, this time in the history of, of Nazism and fascism, we have seen the parallels between Nazism, fascism and Brahmanism. And we know that the founders of the, what is called radical Brahmanism, particularly the RSS and Indumha Saba, they were looking at the Nazi Germany and fascist Italy for their idea. And they wanted to model their organizations based on their organizational things. And we know that Hitler himself was the profounder of what can be called the purity of the race. And according to Hitler, you know, he was aiming at global caste order where the, 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 the Nordic or, you know, the Aryans will be at the top of the food chain and the rest of the people has to be killed. Like for the example, Jews were not even human beings according to the scheme of Hitler. And so where the Romans, the gypsies, they were not to be considered as humans and also the homosexuals and so on and so forth. So we see that the Hitler had a similar aim of placing a certain race at the top of all the humanity. And you know, it, it's Hitler, Hitlerism or Nazism is nothing but the racism at its worst. And who was the philosopher of this, this ideology? So Babasam Ambedkar has tried to show here that Nietzsche was the philosopher of this ideology of, of Nazism and fascism. Now, what is, what is, what is fascinating about this passage is that one can, one can begin to see that very deep reading of Babasam Ambedkar into the Western philosophy. He was towards the end of his life, he was rereading Russell. He was always keeping himself updated with the philosophies of, of the great philosophers. And he had this fascination for reading philosophy and he read Nietzsche widely as we can see that, you know, he's in a, you know, in a, in a paragraph, he's citing how Nietzsche was defied, you know, defied by the, by the, by the Nazi Nazis. And he was, the Hitler was considered to be the Nietzsche in action. So Nietzsche has of course written a lot of books, one of book, his book is about the philosophy of Jharutustra, where he talks about the Superman and the creed of Superman. And Babasam Ambedkar has rejected his philosophy. Like he rejected the philosophy of Plato, the philosophy of forms, like that he has similarly rejected the philosophy of Nietzsche in terms of, though Nietzsche has been rejected, but sometimes, you know, his, 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 his philosophy pops up again and again when people talk about the superhuman races and the superiority of one race or another. So I think that's, that's a very interesting paragraph here. You know, the philosophy of, of Nietzsche compared with the philosophy of the Brahmanism. Anybody has to say anything on this? Before we move on? I think this, this, this paragraphs are self-explanatory. But if there is anything, any comment that you, anybody would like to make, they can. But we can proceed with reading further.
Proceed, let, let him proceed.
Okay, Martinji, let's proceed further.
To identify Nietzsche, whose name and whose philosophy excites so much horror and so much loathing with Manu is sure to cause astonishment and resentment in the mind of the Hindus. What of the fact itself, there can be no doubt. Nietzsche himself has openly declared that in his philosophy, he is the only following the scheme of Manu. In his Antichrist, this is what Nietzsche says. After all, the question is to what ends are falsehood perpetrated. The fact that in Christianity, holy ends are entirely absent constitutes my objection to means it employs. Its ends are only bad ends. The poisoning, the calumination and the denial of life, the contempt of the body, the degradation and the self-pollution of man by virtue of the concept of sin. Consequently, its means are bad as well. My feelings are quite the reverse. When I read the law book of Manu, an incomparably intellectual and superior work, it would be a scene against the spirit even to mention in the same breath with the Bible. You will guess immediately why it has a genuine philosophy behind it. In it, not merely an evil-smelling Jewish distillation of rabbinism and superstition. It gives something to chew even to the most fastidious psychologist. And not to forget the most important point of all, it is fundamentally different from every kind of Bible. By means of it, the noble classes, the philosophers and the warriors guard and the guide the masses. It is replaced with noble values. It is filled with feeling of perfection. With saying yah to life and typhoon sense of well-being in regard to itself and to life. The sun shines upon the whole book. All those things with Christianity smuddles with its bottomless vulgarity. Procreation, women, marriages are here treated with earnestness, with reverence, with love and confidence. How can one possibly place in the hands of the children and woman a book that contains those wild words? To avoid fornication, let every man have his own wife and live, every woman have her own husband. It is better to marry than to burn. And it's a descent to be Christian, so long as the very origin of man is Christianized. That is to say, befall by the idea of immaculate conception. I know of no book in which so many delicate and kindly things are said to women as in the law book of Manu. These old gray beards and saints have a manner of being gallant to women, which perhaps cannot be surpassed. The mouth of a woman, says Manu, on the one occasion, the breast of maiden, the prayer of a child and the smoke of the sacrifice are always pure. Elsewhere, he says, there is nothing purer than the light of the sun. The shadow cast by a cow, air, water, fire and the breath of a maiden. And finally, perhaps this is also a holy lie. All the openings of the body above the novel are pure. All those below the novel are impure. Only maiden is the whole body pure. This lives no doubt that Zaruthustra is a new name for a Manu. And that Daspeck Zaruthustra is a new edition of Manus Mruhti.
Yes, Shashank. You see, this, 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 this comparison between the law of Manu and the book written by philosopher Nietzsche, his book, his book, his very famous book is Daspeck Jharutustra. And this Daspeck Jharutustra is nothing but the new edition of Manus Mruhti. And we have seen the idealization of, of Manus Mruhti by this philosopher called Nietzsche. And his philosophy is still popular in the West. A lot of people regard him as the great philosopher. But we have seen that how Babasam Ambedkar has seen through the philosophy of Nietzsche and has seen that, you know, it, it, it is nothing but the Manus Mruhti in its new edition. And I think that's, that's the, when we are looking at the, the rise of right-wing organizations in the West and their associations with the right, the right-wing organizations in India. We can see that, you know, this book is not only relevant for India. It's, this book is relevant for all those lovers of democracy who wants a society where the equality prevails, where the liberty prevails. Unlike what has been suggested by Nietzsche, what has been suggested by Manu, what has been suggested by the Brahmanical philosophy, or what has been suggested by Nazism, what has been suggested by fascism. So I think this is very fascinating. At once, we, 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 we cannot but think about the world at large in terms of what is happening in the world today, we can directly apply this, 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 these insights of the book in, 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 in today's world as to what is happening today in several countries, how the fundamentalists are taking over, claiming that they are superior by blood, claiming that they are superior by language, claiming them, that claiming that they are superior by, by any attribute whatsoever. You know, it, it applies to racism, it applies to all forms of discrimination. Wherever there is a philosophy of some people being chosen people or some people being the Superman or superwomen, then that ideology is basically anti-human. That ideology is basically, you know, destroys the very fabric of the society. And I think this, therefore, this comparison is very vital and it, 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 it takes us in altogether in a, in a new world of, of, of international movements and politics and so on and so forth. Any comments by anybody, any additions? If not, then we should go on further, okay?
Sure.
Yes.
If there is any difference between Manu and Nietzsche, it lies in this. Nietzsche was genuinely interested in creating a new race of men, which will be a race of Superman as compared with the existing race of men. Manu, on the other hand, was interested in mentoring the privileges of a class who had come to arrogate to itself the claim of being Superman. Nietzsche's Superman were Superman by reason of their worth. Manu Superman was Superman by reason of their birth. Nietzsche was a genuine disinterested philosopher. Manu, on contrary, was an highly engaged to propound a philosophy which served the interest of a class born in a group and whose title to being Superman was not to be lost, even if they lost their virtue. Compare the following text from Manu. Yet Brahma, unable to subsist by his duties just mentioned, may live by the duty of a soldier, for that is the next rank. If it be asked, how must believe should be unable to get a subsistence by either of these employments? The answer is, he may subsist as a mercantile man, applying himself into tillage and attendance on cattle. Manu adds, a Brahman, be ignorant or learn is a great divinity just as a fire. Whether carried forth for the performance of a burnt oblation or not carried forth is a great divinity. Thus though the Brahmins employ themselves in all sorts of mean occupation, they must be honored in every way, for each of them is a very great deed. Thus, Manu's is a degraded and degenerate philosophy of Superman as compared with that of Nietzsche. And therefore, far more odious and loathsome than the philosophy of Nietzsche. This explains why the philosophy of Hinduism does not satisfy the test of justice or of utility. Hinduism is not interested in the common man. Hinduism is not interested in society as a whole. The center of its interest lies in a class. And its philosophy is concerned in sustaining and supporting the rights of that class. That is why in the philosophy of Hinduism, the interests of the common man as well as of a society are denied, suppressed and sacrificed to the interests of this class of Superman.
Okay. I think this, 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 this comparison of Manu and Nietzsche goes very deeper. And after comparing both the law of Manu and Daspeck Jharutustra written by Nietzsche, Babasam Ambedkar concludes fascinatingly that Brahmanism is the worst kind of philosophy. The philosophy of Manu, the Manuism is the worst kind of philosophy. The Manuism is even worse than Nazism and fascism. And that's what we see. You know, the Nazism and fascism, fascism was, you know, resisted, but even today, it's very difficult to find, you know, the resistance to Manuism and Brahmanism. Because, you know, it's, it's, it's a philosophy that, that, that fools the masses. Because the Hinduism is not interested in common man, the Hinduism is not interested in the society. The Hinduism is only interested in the, in the, in the interest of a class, particularly the class of the Brahmins. And therefore, compared to Nazism or compared to, compared to, you know, fascism, Brahmanism is a worst kind of a philosophy that can exist, which is anti-human, which is, which is anti-humanity, which is anti-respect, which is anti-everything that stands for goodness in the world for all. Any, any insights, any comments by anybody?
We can proceed.
Kindly proceed, Shashank. Shashank, you there?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I was not, not ungrateful myself. Sorry, sorry. What is the value of such a religion to man? Mr. Balfour, in speaking to the merits of positivism as religion, asked the positivists certain question which are worth recalling. He very pertently asked, what has positivism to say to the more obscure multitude who are absorbed and well lie over well in the constant struggle with daily needs and narrow cares? Who have but little leisure or inclination to consider the precise role they are called on to play in the great drama of humanity? And who might in any case be puzzled to discover its interest or its importance? Can it assure them that there is no human being so insignificant as not to be of infinite worth in the eyes of him who created the heavens? Also feeble, but that this action may have consequence of infinite moment long after this material system shall have crumbled into nothingness. Does it offer consolation to those who are bereaved? Strength to the weak, forgiveness to the sinful, rest to those who are weary and heavy laden? Same question may be asked of Manu. The answer to each one of them must be affirmed. In short, the philosophy of Hinduism is such that it cannot be called the religion of humanity. That is why, to use the language of Balfour, Hinduism, if it penetrates, does not vitrify the inmost life of ordinary humanity. Indeed, if it does anything, it paralyzes it. There is in Hinduism no nourishment for the ordinary human souls. No comfort for ordinary human sorrow. No help for ordinary human weakness. It leaves men in darkness, face to face with the unthinking energies of nature which gives them birth, to which after a fruitless struggles, they succumb. Not less cruel than the crudest religion, does it leave men divorced from all communion with God? Such is the philosophy of Hinduism. It is Superman's heaven and the common man's damnation.
See, this is how profoundly written by Babasam Ambedkar. And it's, it's, it's holds even true when we look at what's happening in our country today. That how the, 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 the unthinking energies of nature, you know, which gives them birth to which after a fruitless struggles, they succumb. If people, you know, if any religion which creates, it's not the religion of humanity. If the religion is only the religion of a few and it only gives heaven to a few people and damns the common man, then this religion is going to destroy the humanity. And the word used here by Babasam Ambedkar is that it's cruel than the crudest religion. That is, the philosophy of Hinduism is a cruel philosophy, destroys the humanity, destroys the vitals of the society. And I think therefore, we, we, we can, we can reflect on it as to what it has done to our country today. What has happened to the multitude of people? What has happened to these so many Sudras that live in our countries? What has happened to so many tribals? What has happened to so many untouchables? What Hinduism has done to the masses? What Brahmanism has done to the masses? If you, even if we study a little bit of it, one can see how it keeps people unthinking, how it, it doesn't let people revolt, how it doesn't let people to go forward in their lives. And therefore, it's a cruel religion. It's a cruel philosophy of damning the humanity. Go on, Shashank.
Sure. I'm conscious that my position regarding the philosophy of Hinduism will be assailed from different sides. So contrary, it is the current views about it that it is bound to be assailed. The attack may come from various sides. It will be said that-
This is the legal mind of Babasam Ambedkar at work. Because he anticipates what kind of the attack he is going to face, what kind of the arguments he is going to face and, you know, he's ready for those arguments. So, you know, that's the way to write anything, to make it more foolproof. So anticipating the position of the opposite, of people having the opposite view and arguing based on that is a very important thinking tool that we all need to develop. Just like how Ambedkar did, you know, you anticipate what can be the objections to my position. How people create their arguments. So we, we should agree with the counter-arguments. We don't wait for the people who are going to criticize us, but we anticipate their criticism and we respond to them. So that's what Babasam Ambedkar is doing here. And criticism and now responding to them.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. So it will be said that I am wrong in taking the Manus Mruhti as the book of Hindu religion. And that the true gospel of Hinduism is contained in the Vedas and the Bhagavad Gita. I'm sure no orthodox Hindu will be bold enough to repudite the authority of the Manus Mruhti as a book of Hindu religion. Such a charge can be made only by some reformed sects of Hinduism, such as the Arya Samajist. But there can be no doubt that the charge is of not well-founded. To refute this charge, it is perhaps desirable to explain how the Smritis obtain a place and position of authority among the Hindus. The Smritis originally were a collection of rules relating to social traditions, customs, conventions approved of and recommended by those who were learned in the Vedas. For a long time, these rules existed only in the memory of those learned in the Vedas. So they began to be called Smritis. That is, things which are remembered in contrast to Vedas or Shruti, that is, things which were heard. In the beginning of the Smritis, even when they were codified, were treated as a rule of inferior value as compared to the rules contained in the Vedas. The difference in their authority and binding force was the result of the natural difference between trustworthiness of what is heard as compared to what is only remembered. There was also another reason of the differentiation in the two sorts of Dharma Shastra literature. This was based upon the status of their authors. The authors of the Vedas were Rishis. The authors of the Smritis were only learned men. The Rishis were superior in status and sanctity than those who were merely learned. Consequently, the Vedas were treated as more authoritative than Smritis. The consequences arising from this was well expressed in the Hindu theological formula according to which, if there was a conflict in the rules of two Vedas on the same subject, it meant the option for a rule of Vedas cannot be deemed to be inoperative. On the other hand, in a conflict between a rule of Shruti and a rule of Smriti, the rule of Shruti prevailed. Because for the reasons stated above, Smriti was inferior in authority to Shruti. But as pointed out by the professor Altaker, the Smritis in course of time came to be invested with the same authority as belonged to the Vedas. Various means were adapted to accomplish this purpose. In the first place, the authors of the Smritis were elevated to the status of the Rishis. The early Dharma Shastra writers like Gautama and Bodhayaana were never given the status of Rishi. But Manu and the Yasna Valkya are reckoned as Rishis. By this means, the status of the Smritis was equated to that of the Shritis. The second means adapted was to regard the Smriti as a record from a memory of a Shruti which was lost. Thus, Smriti, instead of being regarded as something quite different from Shruti, came to be regarded as akin to an indistinguishable from Shruti. The result of these steps was a complete change in the rules regarding the authority of the two. Originally, if there was a conflict between the Smriti and the Shruti, the Shruti prevailed. The new rule was that in the case of a conflict, there was an option which mean that Smriti rule was as operative as a rule of Shruti. This new rule has been expressly laid down by Kumarila in his commentary as the Purva Mimansa Sutra whereby Smritis were made as authoritative as- in his commentary as the Purva Mimansa Sutra whereby Smritis were made as authoritative as Shruti's. While originally Hindu society was bound to the Vedas and could not follow any rule which are contrary to the Vedas, the new rule altered the situation and left it to the option of society either to follow the Shruti or Smriti. But even this option was later on taken away. This was turned by making the study of the Smritis as compulsory as that of Shruti.
Okay, uh I think what we get readymade here is a small history of the Brahmanical philosophy and what happened in the Brahmanical text. And the Brahmanical philosophy tend to claim that the the Manus Smriti is not the book of Hinduism. You know, it's just one of the books of the Hindu religion and they tend to rely on the authorities of the Vedas and the Shruti. But Bhavas Ambedkar here shown historically as to how the Smriti has the same status as the status of the Shruti. And 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 eventually how the 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 particularly Kumarila Bhatt who was anti-Buddhism and who was a staunch Brahmin who tried to attack, in fact, he attacked Buddhism very violently and propagated that the Buddhism has to be annihilated from this country. This Kumarila Bhatt has given the authoritative status to the Smritis. That means Manus Smriti. So we can see that in the Indian history, this 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 strand of of degrading the human beings of of treating people inferior, of treating people Sudras and raising one class higher than other classes was going through and more made more and more stricter by the philosophers, the Brahmanical philosophers like Kumarila Bhatta. And I think this this is very interesting passage because you know, it it shows that however you try to deny the importance of Manus Smriti uh in the in the in the Brahmanical Hindu religion, we can see that it's the heart of Hinduism. The Manus Smriti and the Chaturvarna is the heart of Hindu religion. If we destroy the heart of Hinduism that is Chaturvarna, there is no Hinduism. You know, the 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 breath on which the Hinduism survives is the breathe of caste. If you remove the caste system from this country, the whole edifice of Brahmanism collapses, the whole edifice of Hinduism collapses. And I think that's that's the significant statement that Bhavas Ambedkar has made very analytically. He has tried to show as to how these Smritis have taken over the authority of the Shruti and they are compared to the authorities of the Veda, how Manu was raised to the status of Rishi. Instead of just a learned man, he was called, Manu was called the Rishi. So let's go on, read further unless there is anything anybody has to say. Shashank?
Yes, so I'll begin. Yeah, this was done gradually. In the first place, it was suggested that the Shruti's and Smritis are the two eyes of the Brahmana. If he is devoid of one, he becomes a one-eyed person. Then came the theory that Brahmanium is possible only as a result of a joint study of the both the Vedas and the Smritis. Finally came the rule according to which the study of the Smriti only was recognized and contempt of the Smriti was a made a sin. And the person guilty of it was declared to be condemned to be born as a pest for twenty-one generations.
Paragraph explains everything, isn't it?
Yes, yes, yes.
As how the the Manus Smriti started taking over even the authorities of the Vedas and the Smritis.
Yeah.
Go on.
Yeah. This is how the Smritis have been recognized as a source of a Hindu religion and there is no doubt to quote Professor Altaker. The Smritis have played a great part in determining the features of a many a social and a social religious institution and customs and in molding the development of a modern Hinduism. It cannot therefore be maintained that I was wrong in taking Manus Smriti as containing the philosophy of Hinduism. This work of elevating the Smritis to the status of the Vedas was undertaken by the Brahmins for a most selfish reason. The Smritis contain in all is wild and luxurious growth in the doctrine of caste, the doctrine of superiority of the Brahmins, the rights and the privileges, the doctrines of subordination of the Shatryas and the Vaishyas and the doctrine of degradation of the Sudras. Such being the philosophy of the Smritis, the Brahmins were directly interested in investing the Smritis with the authority which was claimed for the Vedas and which they ultimately succeeded to their advantage. But to the renovation of the whole country. But considering which orthodox and pious Hindu would do, that the Smritis do not contain the philosophy of Hinduism, but that the same is to be found in the Vedas and the Bhagavad Gita. The question is, what difference would this make in the result? It seems to me that it matters very little whether one takes the Smritis or the Vedas or the Bhagavad Gita. Do the Vedas teach something which is fundamentally different from what Smritis do? Does the Bhagavad Gita run contrary to the injunctions of the Smritis? A few illustrations will make the matter clear. It is indisputable that a Veda has laid down the theory of the Chaturvarna in what is known as a Purushakta. The Purushakta recognizes two basic principles. It recognizes division of society into four sections as an ideal. It also recognizes that the ideal relationship between the four sections is inequality. What the Bhagavad Gita teaches is also beyond controversy. Its teaching may be summarized in the following four pronouns made by the Krishna in the Bhagavad Gita. I myself have created arrangements known as the Chaturvarna that is four-fold division of society in four castes, Brahmin, Shatrya, Vaishya, Sudra, assigning them different occupations in accordance with the native capacities. It is I who am the maker of this Chaturvarna. Even if it make it easier to follow the occupation of another Varna, yet to follow the occupation of one's own Varna is more meritorious. Although one may not be able to do it quite efficiently, there is bliss in following the occupations of one's own Varna, even if death were to result in performing it. To follow the occupation of another Varna is risky. Third, the educators should not unsettle the faith of the uneducated who have become attached to their occupation. He himself should perform the occupation of his Varna and make all those perform there accordingly. And an educated man may not become attached to his occupation. But the uneducated and dull-minded people who have become attached to their occupation should not be spoiled by the educated by putting them on the wrong path, by abandoning their own occupation. Oh Arjun, whenever this religion of duties and occupation, that is the religion of Chaturvarna declines, then I myself will come to birth to punish those who are responsible for its downfall and to restore it. Gita four seven eight. Such is the position of Gita. What difference is there between it and the Manus Smriti? Gita is Manu in a nutshell. Those who run away from Manus Smriti and want to take refuge in the Gita either do not know Gita or are prepared to omit from their consideration that soul of Gita which makes it akin to Manus Smriti. Compare the teachings of Veda of the Bhagavad Gita with what is contained in the Manus Smriti which I have taken as a text for illustrating the philosophy of Hinduism. What difference does one find? The only difference one can find is that Vedas and the Bhagavad Gita deal with the general theory. While the Smritis are concerned in working out the particulars and details of that theory. But so far as the essence is concerned, all of them, the Smritis, the Vedas and the Bhagavad Gita are woven on the same pattern. The same thread runs through them and are really parts of the same fabric. The reason for this obvious, the Brahmins who were the authors of the whole body of the Hindu religious literature, except for the Openish literature, took good care to inject doctrines formulated by them in the Smritis into the Vedas and the Bhagavad Gita. Nothing is to be gained in the picking and choosing between them. The philosophy of Hinduism will be the same whether one takes the Manus Smriti as its gospel or whether one takes the Vedas and the Bhagavad Gita as the gospel of Hinduism. Secondly, it will be contained in that Manus Smriti is a book of laws and not a code of ethics. And that what I have presented as a philosophy of Hinduism is only legal philosophy and is not moral philosophy of Hinduism. My answer to this contention is simple. I hold that in Hinduism, there is no distinction between legal philosophy and moral philosophy. That is because in Hinduism, there is no distinction between the legal and the moral. The legal being also the moral. Not much evidences, yeah.
This this reading is self-explanatory unless there is anything anybody like to comment, we will, we can take a pause. But I think it's it's very easy to comprehend. What do you, what do you all think? Is there any point that's not making sense to us? What Bhavas Ambedkar is trying to say that Gita or Veda or Smritis, they are the part and parcel of the same fabric. They are written by the same people, they are written by the same authors with the intention of subjugating the people. So I think it explains a lot about Hindu religion here. So Vedas and maybe Bhagavad Gita, they try to deal with the general theory, but the details of those theories were worked out in the Manus Smriti. Very fascinating sort of reading here, what a fascinating sort of uh the argument that Bhavas Ambedkar has developed here. Pages. So anybody has anything to uh comment or say? Or we go on reading further?
I think, yeah, we can go on reading further.
Or we can go on, okay?
Yeah.
These arguments are very easy to follow as we can
Yeah, absolutely. It's very easy to understand and follow, yeah, yeah. So not much evidence is necessary to support my contention. Take the meaning of the word Dharma in the Rig Veda. The word Dharma occurs in the Rig Veda fifty-eight times. It is used in six different senses. It is used to denote ancient custom, laws, any arrangement which maintains law and order in society, the course of nature, the quality of substance and duty of good and civil. It will thus be seen that from the very beginning, the word Dharma in Hinduism has a twofold connotation. It means both law and moral. That is one reason why in philosophy of Hinduism, there can be no distinction between legal philosophy and moral philosophy. This is not to say that Hinduism have no code of morality. To be sure, they have, but it is very pertinent to us the nature and the character of conduct which the Hindu code of ethics declares to be moral. To have an idea of nature of the conduct which the Hindu thinks moral, it is better to begin by recognizing that there are three levels of conduct which must be distinguished. First, conduct arising from the instincts and the fundamental needs. Second, conduct regulated by the standards of society. And third, conduct regulated by individual consents. Conduct on the first level we do not call moral conduct. It is of course not immoral, it is merely unmoral. It is governed by forces, not as a moral in purpose, but as valuable in result. The forces are biological or sociological or psychological. These have purpose such as to satisfy hunger or to forge a weapon against an enemy. But the end is once set up by the physical or instinctive nature. So long as this is merely accepted as an inevitable end and not compared with others valued and chosen, it is not properly moral. Conduct on the second level is no doubt social. Wherever groups of men are living there are certain ways of acting which are the common to the group, folkways. There are approved ways of acting common to a group and handed down from generation to generation. Such approved ways of acting are called the mores or the morals of the group. They imply the judgment of the group that they are to be followed. The welfare of the group is regarded as in some sense embedded in them. It becomes a duty of the individual to follow them. And if anyone acts contrary to them, he is made to feel the group's disapproval. They cannot strictly speaking call the conduct moral because the end is accepted as the standard of a good prescribed by society. If it had spoken of a moral conduct, it is only because it conforms to the mores and morals of the society. It may be called customary morality. Conduct on the third level is a conduct which alone is truly and completely moral. That is because in it, the individual recognizes the right or chooses the good and freely devotes himself heartily to its fulfillment. It does not merely accept what is inevitable or follow which is approved by society. He values and chooses the aim and becomes personally responsible. His is reflective morality.
Okay, I think these three versions of morality that Bhavas Ambedkar has talked here are very important even if we want to understand anything happening in the society, this discussion can be very deep because the way Bhavas Ambedkar has defined the morality, the conduct arising out of three possibilities. One is from the instincts and fundamental needs. So as a human being, we have certain instincts and certain fundamental needs. And like for example, we have hunger and we need to take care of hunger. Then we have, we have to have the means to satisfy hunger, like shelter and so many needs we have and the conduct arises from this kind of instincts and fundamental needs. Secondly, there is the conduct arises by the standards of the society because society has put in certain uh standards by we need to comply with that in the sense of not disturbing the social fabric of the society. And 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 we have to follow the 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 so-called roles uh given by the society on one level. But the third level that Bhavas Ambedkar talked about, conduct regulated by individual conscience and where the the individual and individual is free to choose what is right and and right and good for him. And not only choose what is right and good for him, but also work towards achieving what is right and good for him and being personally responsible for that. And this morality Bhavas Ambedkar declared as the reflective morality. And I think this is very interesting term that Bhavas Ambedkar has given here, reflective morality. The conduct that arises with the reflection, with the deeper, deeper reflection. Just like there is a reflective thinking where people reflect on one's thinking, on one's views, on one's understanding and based on that reflection, we act. Similarly, this reflective morality is the most important aspect of the morality that we need to understand. And by classifying the morality on these three labels, a lot of things becomes easier for us to understand our present day issues and our own behavior as to whether whether we are, whether we are behaving best after reflecting deeply on certain things. So I think this is very interesting sort of a classification given by Bhavas Ambedkar. And the last point about morality is a fundamental point that we all need to understand and 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 operate in society. Any anything on this? Anything on this? If not, then we can move ahead.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
On what level does Hindu morality stand? Obviously, it is not on the third level. This means that a Hindu is social but not moral in the strict sense of the term. Hindu takes no responsibility for the ends he serves. He is a willing tool in the hands of society, content to follow. He is not a free agent not afraid to differ. His notion of a sin gives remarkable proof of his unmoral character. Institutes of Vishnu gives a list of sins which are divided into nine classes. First, deadly sins, Atipat Pataka. These are certain forms of incest to be at atone for only by burning. Second, great sins, Mahapataka, Mahapataka. These are killing a Brahman, drinking spiritual liquor, stealing the gold of a Brahman, connection with a guru's wife, also social intercourse with those guilty of such sins. Third, minor sins of a similar character, Anupataka. This includes the killing of a certain other classes of person, giving false evidence and killing a friend, stealing lands or deposits of Brahman, certain forms of incest and adultery. Minor sins, Upapataka. Sins of false statement, neglect of certain religious duties, adultery, unlawful occupation, offenses connected with the marrying before an elderly brother, not paying one's debt to the gods and man's atheism. Fifth, sin affecting loss of caste, Jati Brahmasakara. Causing bodily pain to a Brahman, smelling things which should not be smelled, dishonest, dealing certain unnatural crimes. Sixth, sins which degrade to a mixed caste, Samakarikarna, killing domestic or wild animals. Seventh, sins which render one unworthy to receive arms, Oh Patrikarna. Receiving presents and arms from despicable Receiving presents and arms from despicable person, trade, money, lending, lying, serving a Sudra. Eight, sins causing defilement, Malavaha. Killing birds, amphibious animals and aquatic animals, worms and insects, eating nutmegs or other plants similar in their effects to intoxicating liquors. Ninth, miscellaneous sins, Parikiranaka, those not already mentioned. This list of sins is not exhaustive, but it is long enough and illustrative enough to give us the idea which underlies the Hindu notion of a sin. In the first place, it connotes the fall of a man from a prescribed form of conduct. In the second place, it means to be defiant, to become unclean. This is the root meaning of the term Patak. It means Patan, Patana, falling away and it means Asvacha, A- A- Asavcha, being rendered unclean. In either case, according to Hindu notion is a disease of the soul. In the first sense, it is merely breach of a rule of external conduct. In the other sense, it is a defilement of the body to be clean and purified by both or by pilgrimage or by sacrificial offering. But it is, it is never the spiritual defilement which is associated with the harboring of evil thoughts and purposes. This shows the morality, morality of the Hindu is purely social. This means that a level of his morality is purely traditional and customary. There are two evils of customary morality. In the first place, there is no surety that it will always be charged with sincerity and the purity of the motive. For it is only when the morality penetrates to the deepest springs of purpose and feelings in the individual that pretends will cease to find a place in human behavior. In the second place, customary morality is an anchor and a drag. It holds up the average man and holds back the man who forges ahead. Customary morality is only another name for moral stagnation. This is true of all cases where morality is only customary morality. But the customary morality of the Hindus has an evil feature which is peculiar to it. Customary morality is a matter of meritorious conduct. Ordinarily, this meritorious conduct is something which is good from the general or the public point of view. But among the Hinduism, the meritorious conduct is not concerned with the worship of God or the general good of community. Meritorious conduct in Hinduism is concerned with the giving of a presence of good and of honor to the Brahmins. Hindu ethics is worship of the Superman. What difference would it have made if I had taken the Hindu ethics as a basis for deducting the philosophy of Hinduism? Most students of Hinduism forget that, that just as in Hinduism, there is no difference between law and religion, so there is no difference between law and ethics. Both are concerned with the same thing namely regulating the conduct of the low-class Hindus to subservise the ends of the high-class Hindus. Thirdly, it will be objected that I presented an altogether false picture of Hinduism in as much as I have omitted to take into account the Upanishadas, which are the true source of Hindu philosophy. I admit that, sorry.
No problem, no problem. I think you know this, this discussion that Bhavasa Ambidhar had here was very pertinent in terms of understanding the nature of the Hindu morality. And the Hindu morality is 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 not reflective morality, doesn't have the conduct based on deep thinking and reflecting. It is based on customs and it's based on traditions and 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 therefore it it doesn't support the reflective morality, that means the the welfare of the individual. And here when Bhavasa Ambidhar talks about the Hindu ethics or Hindu morality, it's nothing but the worship of the Superman because everywhere the Brahmins are put in the center of everything. Even in terms, when we have seen this nine classification of the scenes, we have seen that, you know, it's all about the Brahmins. It's all about how not to hurt Brahmins and it is completely oriented towards safeguarding the interest of the Brahmins as we can see very clearly in the classification of of the scenes. And therefore, I think the the point that Bhavasa Ambidhar is trying to drive home here is that even if, even if Hinduism is judged from the standpoint of point of morality, it it is philosophy or its its moral philosophy is very ugly. It's 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 moral philosophy is 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 not in consistence with the spirit of humanity, with the spirit of democracy and with the spirit of respect and reverence for fellow human beings irrespective of their their social stations. And I think, I think that's what you know stands out reading other texts like this, that 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 reflection or or reflecting or 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 thinking deeply about certain things is so important. And therefore, to to create a community that thinks, that reflects, instead of the community that only follow what is the customs or tradition or the community that only follows instincts and it's 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 fundamental needs. You know, this 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 unless the society is oriented towards what is called the reflective morality, the the morality that is in consistence with the with the truth-seeking and in the Buddhist sense, we can say that Sheila and Pradhya, you know, they cannot be separated. We cannot have Sheila just that, you know, it has to have this reflection built within it whenever we we practice in the world or we operate in the world. So I think this this discussion has been very, very beneficial to us in terms of knowing the philosophy of Hinduism. And I think that we we can, we can, we can take a pause here for today before we conclude, I would like to request anybody, those who would like to share or comment or or reflect on what we have.
While the readings were going on, I remembered an episode happened in literary conference, Marathi Literary Conference, the famous poet Namdev Dasa. He had, you know, read one poem against this philosophy stating that Charwaid Atra Puran Sola Shastra, Maartomi Maja Dashva and Lakshmi Saraswati Pakshapati Randa. Yaamatla Amchakada Alaya Nait, Nizamatla Amchakali Nizleya Nait, like that. And then there was a chaotic situation. All the Hindu writers were up and they were stating that you should stop this. He said that you only have, you know, taught us all these things. So listen it like that. This is what I wanted to, you know, share and Bhavasa Ambidhar has bitterly criticized the Hindu philosophy in his Bhaisrat Bharat editorials. He said it's not a religion, it's a punishment. Isn't it? So this is very interesting actually reading and also your explanation to that. We can take a pause.
Yes, yes. Yeah, before, before taking a pause, I just want to point on the beautiful points which Baba Sai has mentioned about the three conducts. I think these three conducts can be definitely applied to our Ambidhar Buddhist as well. The conduct arising from our fundamental is conduct arising from our instincts, that is one conduct. And the second conduct, we can definitely apply how is our standard of society, how standard of Ambidhar Buddhist society in today's scenario. So that how is our conduct, you know, that is second. And the third is how the conduct is regulated by the individual conscience. So all these three conducts, I think these are the three conducts, we need to like reflect, we need to think, we need to standardize those conducts and how the standardized align with the Sheila and the Pradhya, the way Mangasir beautifully mentioned that how we can have the reflective morality and reflection in our conduct, in 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 our individual level, in our social level, in our fundamental needs. And that kind of a standards, I can definitely take away from this paragraph.
Wonderful, Shashank, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. So I think we we, though we are nearing the end of a reading, but I think the next class is equally important and I think it is going to be very exciting to read about the the final sort of comments by Bhavasa Ambidhar and he is going to take on the philosophy at a very deeper level and hopefully we will be able to conduct our class on the stipulated day of or Saturday. So thank you so much all for joining today, even when there was a short notice. And of course, we put the class on the YouTube so other people who couldn't join today can benefit from it. So thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
And Jai Bhav.